So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Um, any board committee reports? How about send me where, what board you would like to, and what committee and liaison you would like to be if you haven't already? That's the report. Superintendent's report, Rob?
I'm gonna keep, keep it very short because really the main purpose of this specially scheduled meeting was simply to consider a couple of important agenda items. This week has been all about and continues to be all about planning for the reentry plan that is due Friday. We're making good progress, very proud of our team, working very hard, engaging the community and getting it done. So we're on target for a website launch Friday and to have the, um, the report up as part of the website along with other resources for families. That's all.
All right, thank you. I'm sure everyone's anxious, um, everyone across the state and the country. Um, so number four discussion items. Do we have, I don't know, I printed out the agenda, it's on my computer.
I didn't have anything particularly listed.
Okay. And number five, so if, um, Rob, would you like to approve five or at least first five, six and seven?
I would move the approval of the minutes of the July 14th, 2020 Board of Ed reorg meeting. I would move approval of the personnel agenda. I would move, uh, approval of the budget transfers of 10,000 or over for the months of June and July 2020 as attached. I would move the contract renewal of the agreement for the auditorium manager and drama coordinator for John Gordiac for 2021. I would move the approval of the agreement with Altaris Consulting Group for security consulting services for the 2021 school year at the estimated cost of 76,440 and that the Assistant Superintendent for Business will authorize to execute the contract. And I would move the contract with professional security services for the 2021 school year to Bridger or Bridger Security Services, Inc. as the lowest responsible bidder as attached.
Can I get a second, Steve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like a little bit more information on the security firm. If somebody could fill us in a little about that, I'm reading it right now, but, uh, never heard of the company. If somebody could just give us a little background, do other people use them?
Yeah. I mean, I just looked at the references, which happened to be some of the school districts that I am familiar with, um, being from that side of the bridge. So that was good. Um, I also liked, not that I'm giving all the information, but Vito, little synapses, I think they, if you, when you get a chance, it's very impressive, but Lisa, please feel free. But I did recognize the names of the schools that they use. It's not like it's a school in Kentucky they were.
So this firm is located in Mount Kisco. They were one of the firms that was actually recommended to us by Altaris. Altaris has worked with them before. Um, so they were, we received two bids the second time around and they were the lowest bidder the second time around. Um, they do have a lot of local school district experience. So, um, I contacted three school districts and I know people at, um, Suffolk, um, North Putnam, Northern, Suffolk Central, like they keep changing, um, Putnam Northern Bosse's and Somers. And they all gave, um, excellent reviews. They said that they've never, they have nothing bad to say about them. They've never had any issues with them. They came, they recommended. Um, and they, the conversation they had with them, they stress that they, um, they mostly in school district are law enforcement, retired military, and that was also confirmed by their references. They, um, they were able to state that that is accurate. They have been able, for the majority of their staffing needs, been able to hire retired law enforcement. So, um, so that was good to know. So, um, I think we're pleased with what they presented to us and, uh, you know, we're looking forward to, to moving forward from them.
They bid the first time around?
They did, but we had another firm that was the lower bidder, the lowest bidder, but they were unable to produce satisfactory references for us. So we rejected and we went back out to bid.
And we're talking about roughly, uh, eight guards and $275,000 a year?
Yes.
So just a quick question, cause I know that in the other, I remember reading, maybe not this last one, but something about how we had people who currently work for the current company and we wanted them to work for the new company. Is that still something that was in like some sort of stipulation?
So that wasn't the bid spec that they would need to, um, consider. You know, we can't compel anybody to do anything, but that they would consider, um, hiring any staff that we, we wanted moved over. So I did get three at the high school and we have one at, one of our elementary schools and the principals have reached out to those, um, current guards and given them contact information at this company. And, um, they will start the process of transferring over if the employee, you know, desires to do that.
Okay.
Just one other question, is this the same amount of guards we had last year?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay.
If I read the contract correctly, and I may not have, I didn't see an actual term, just, this is an hourly rate. Is this an open ended term or is it a one-year term implicitly or is it?
It's, it's the bid specs specified for one year to four additional years at our discretion.
Excellent. Cause I didn't see anything in the, uh, and maybe I missed it, but I.
No, I didn't attach the bid specs, which have all that detail on it.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, does anyone else have any questions or comments? All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Um, so if Cheryl, would you like to do eight other business items?
Sure. Be it resolved that the Board of Education here, oh, I'm on seven. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the textbook primary resource list for the 2020-21 school year as attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the 2020-21 professional development plan as attached? Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the 2020-21 district code of conduct as attached?
And Tara, would you like to second it?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Aye.
Are there any major changes to the code of conduct?
Thank you, Vito. The words out of my mouth.
There are, there are two changes to the code of conduct that have been recommended by council. Uh, the first change is including language in the introduction that helps to include remote instruction as part of how school, uh, school defines, um, school property or school functions to make sure that any work that's being done during remote learning is included and covered under the code of conduct. The second change is, um, including language that includes vaping and vaping paraphernalia as not permitted within, uh, on school grounds. So those were the two major changes, uh, that were, that were requested.
I didn't, I had a, I had that same question. Thanks, Vito. I didn't have a chance to read it carefully and I didn't see, um, cause we, that just came today at just before four. So my request is if we can get some of the longer items, um, multiple page items, you know, a little bit further when in advance is helpful. I have a question about the, um, professional learning plan for 2021. So is it, I guess I'm not seeing, what I was looking to see in here was, um, specific plans for what was going to be the content for, for the coming year, but that's not, that's not in this plan, right?
No, that's not part of what's required in the, in the public plan that gets approved by the Board of Education.
So is this updated like, I, so for instance, on page 14, just as an example for RT, the, um, RTL Pier One interventions, it talks about the district exploring and examining homework practices. Is that an ongoing thing that you're actually, it's still in there or is that just a holdover?
That was a holdover from, uh, the work that we were doing with tri-states and the ability for us to continue examining that. Um, that may be in the wrong, the wrong spot, may just be labeled incorrectly, um, but that is a, that's something that we are continuing to look at as we continue on.
Yeah, it's listed under professional learning plan district initiatives. So the survey results were interesting. I was wondering if you could tell us when the survey was given?
Sure. So the survey was done by the professional learning committee. Uh, it was done over the, sometime in January or so. Um, and so it was before we, uh, went out on the COVID closure. Um, and this is a survey that hadn't been done in a, in a, in a very long time. Um, and the professional learning committee, uh, really wanted to know what people thought were some of the highlights of, and really the, the key areas around professional learning across the district. Um, so a lot of, a lot of good information came out of that. Um, and a lot of great discussion came out of the kind of examination of that data with the professional learning committee to kind of give us a direction, uh, for moving forward in the coming years around what are our major areas that we'd like to hit.
Do you think, do you think you're gonna be able to hit any of them this year? I mean, the big focus was on, on RTI and sort of like differentiation, social emotional learning, student engagement. Do you think that, I mean, we just reapproved the calendar to, to push the professional development forward in the year and there's a real, a real strong, um, pressure on that professional development to speak to the COVID realities of hybrid learning. So I wonder if, if you think that this, these sorts of interests that teachers have will be able to inform that process at all?
We're gonna try. Um, obviously, you know, the, the beginning of the year is gonna be spent on the topics that you just kind of, kind of mentioned. Um, you know, we do have a professional development day, uh, still, uh, on election day, uh, that we can hopefully use for some of this work. A lot of that PD also takes place, um, in faculty meetings and department meetings. Um, so, you know, the hope is that we'll be able to cover some of it. Um, I don't think we'll be able to get as far as we really wanted to get, um, but I think we can lay the groundwork for, uh, some of the, the future years.
Yeah. I mean, there's clearly an intersection between, um, the hybrid learning and distance learning and student engagement. I mean, you know, like that's a big intersection there, but maybe not in a way that anyone was imagining back in January.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I, I just have a request that, um, when you plan the, the schedule for professional development in September, if you can share that with the board, cause there, you know, I think because there's so much pressure on, um, understanding, um, how the district is responding to, to, you know, momentous shift in how we're, you're delivering education, um, it would be really helpful to me as a board member to be able to have some of the, some of the language at my fingertips to be able to help articulate when, um, um, some of the specific kinds of professional development, um, initiatives that you're going to, you know, put into September and, and you know, this kinds of, almost like the bullet, the bullet points, right? What are some of the, some of the techniques and approaches? Anything that you can share with us as a, obviously, I'm sure it'll be, you know, early September, you'll be working on it all summer, but, um, anything you can share would be really, really helpful. And even any of the stuff that's happening in the smaller cohorts of teachers this summer, um, any work that they're doing that is relevant to this massive shift to a hybrid kind of, um, reality, uh, at least for foreseeable future, that would be really, really helpful.
Would be happy to.
Thank you.
Anyone else have some comments?
I have a question on the, uh, on the textbooks and obviously it's for Scott. And Scott, if we wanted, could we ask for a copy of one of the textbooks to review?
Sure.
Which one do you want? I'm sorry.
What do you think I would want? That's a good question. No.
Finance?
No.
Maybe you want a good novel?
Economics.
I want economics. If, Scott, if you could put one aside for me and the next time we're at a meeting, you could just give it to me, no rush. Uh, I'd just like to look through it, you know, uh, in general, you know, in talking to kids that I know, not necessarily from Eastchester, I don't think kids know enough about economics these days and I would love to see what's in our textbook. That's all. Nothing more than that.
Sure.
And my other question is, uh, a couple of textbooks are, uh, in my opinion, pretty old. You know, some are dated 2000 and business law says it's the year 2000 in the 16th edition. And I just wonder, you know, 20 years, I mean, they gotta be up to addition, you know, 22, 23, you know what I mean? And I don't know if that makes a difference, but I'm just questioning it as to, uh, how we have some textbooks that are 20 years old, including business law, not only business law.
I think there's a, there's a couple of reasons. Sometimes textbook is, is one of the, one of the resources they use. It may not be the most updated, but there may be some good information in there that they're using. Um, a lot of the online resources aren't necessarily things that we, we list, we would list here in approval. Um, you know, as we go through, we look at kind of the need, um, and we ask teachers to kind of bring forward their, their requests and needs, and then we balance that out with, with the ability to pay for these items.
I would figure that, and I would figure it also has to do on how well they wear, because, you know, business law, you might not have that many and they might not wear out that badly. So, you know, that could be another reason. I'm just, just curious as to how you determine, you know, when something needs to be replaced that is potentially, you know, old at 20 years old, you know?
It's more at the request of the teacher, um, and their need for updated materials. Um, you know, we don't necessarily cycle through them. Um, there's teachers tend to, we're, a lot of teachers are moving away from textbooks. Um, so we're not necessarily using all of them to the extent that they used to be used. Um, but really at the request of the teacher would be the time that we begin to really look at, uh, new and updated material.
Not to start a huge discussion, but I would think that by leaving it up to the teacher, someone who's been teaching something for 10 or 12 or 15 years, they might not wanna change your textbook so they don't have to change their lesson plans. You know, so I mean, just, you know, that could be a negative as to not changing a textbook or driving the change to change a textbook not coming from the teacher. You know what I'm saying? It, you know, continuous improvement? You don't change something in 15 years, there's no continuous improvement in, you know, it's obvious. There might be, and there might be a lot of other things that get improved with the same textbook. I'm just thinking that people could get potentially too comfortable with an old textbook. That's just my opinion.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that's giving our teachers a, a lot of credit. Um, I think they are much more involved in keeping their curriculum up to date than they are about necessarily not changing their lesson plans. So I think that a lot of teachers do come forward and they do request new materials and that's when we begin to look at them and begin to bring them forward.
Scott, I have no, I have no doubt what you said is absolutely true, but, you know, there's always the exceptions, just, you know, and sometimes stuff could fall under the cracks for those reasons. The only reason I brought it up, not to be critical. I'm done, thank you.
I, I have, um, a question. So I'm gonna assume maybe, I don't know, maybe assume is not the right word. When school reenters, will there maybe be a, a denim to the code of conduct that has to do with some rules or guidelines or regulations, whatever we have to say about maybe mask wearing, one person in the bathroom? And if these things are violated or not followed, would there be some repercussions? I, I know it's gonna take a lot getting used to, but there's also, you know, things that we've seen, I've seen over the last few months, you know, are those things that might just be sent out as new guidelines or rules? Or would those be added in as addendum to the code of conduct? Or am I just thinking it's just guidelines and rules that'll go out?
So in general, um, I think we're going to be approaching that from the latter, that we're gonna be sending these out as, um, you know, kind of district expectations and school expectations. Um, really where the code of conduct comes in is when students don't follow the rule or the guideline. Um, and really then, um, where, where we made changes currently kind of brings out that piece of it in terms of the, the remote piece, in terms of the, um, and the insubordination piece.
Okay.
Wouldn't be following the directive of, um, the, the school principal or of the district.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. I know it's not gonna be the easiest.
I would also say that maybe that particular student would need some more, you know, in service as to the reason why we're doing this and some more education would be warranted in that situation.
Okay. Thank you.
You just, just follow up, cause I wanna, I wanna go back and look at, and take a closer look. Could you remind me what the updates to the code of conduct are? You said vaping and.
And the addition of, um, remote learning to the definition of, um, a school function or being on school property.
Right. Okay. Great.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I, can I ask a tangentially related question that the, uh, the issue of the code of conduct reminded me? Uh, does anybody know if we did receive an appeal to the commissioner on the other issue that we discussed a, a few months ago? Or whether it got waived or do they still have time?
We have not received any additional information on that situation, which indicates to me that you probably have not moved on to the commissioner or we would have been notified as such. Can't be a hundred percent sure of them, but the deadline, I believe, is probably expired by now.
Yeah, okay. If somebody could just double check with council and make sure that we haven't, if we have not, I'd just would appreciate that.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you, we have not received any communication through our council or to us that that family has made that action. So the only other way to verify that would be to reach out to that family and ask them if they intend to do something.
No, I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
But there's been no, there's been no communication back to us.
Oh, excellent.
Okay. Um, any other before we vote? Okay. So all in favor of the eight, the other business items?
Yep.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Future meeting dates, Tuesday, September 1st, Tuesday, September 15th, Tuesday, September 29th, all in 2020. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the board?
That exact?
Cheryl?
I just had a quick one. Um, so I know you guys have been absolutely working under the wire on this plan that has to be submitted to the state on Friday and that will be released concomitantly with our new website. So you're really swamped and thank you to everyone who's been really active in that and to all the teachers and all your collaborators. Um, I'm just wondering if that you will have anything, any, any preview that you will be able to release, um, to the board before Friday?
Yeah, I was gonna mention that at the beginning and then I thought I'd mention it at the end because I collected to mention that, but right now it's in, it's going off tomorrow for review with the district administrators. Um, just for, in print, we already reviewed it verbally. Um, and also our ETA team is reviewing that. Then Thursday, I anticipate releasing it to you as board members, perhaps even tomorrow night, and also ready to the task force. Uh, and then it'll go up Friday. The website is scheduled to launch at 9:00 AM. And, you know, if our, if our plan is ready by 9:00 AM, it'll be there with it. If not, it'll be released later that afternoon and we'll put a note, placeholder, because we will be writing it. It's up to, you know, it's just, I have to document right now at this point. We just wanna get all the little details right. So, um, you'll get it, you'll get it, uh, either tomorrow night or Thursday morning, about 24 hours ahead. We'll send it to our staff late, later in the day Thursday, so it's, they'll get it, you know, the night before or the late afternoon before the public gets it. So we're doing it in phases, but you'll be, um, after the administrative team and before the staff at large, we'll get it to you.
Well, you've been collaborating with some teachers, ETA, so they have a sense of the, of what's coming, right?
Absolutely. They do, and I think we've been talking to the members in general terms. And I think you saw what I sent out Friday night, which gave some general guidelines. That went out to our staff and families. Won't be any surprises at all in this at all. I, I can't imagine, at least for you, um, I, I don't, I think staff, there could be some elements in there that they'll certainly wonder about, cause they haven't been as close to it. But I do believe, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Claire's been, you know, giving her membership some information. She's certainly brought an executive team fully on board. They've been part of our meetings right along. And there are some elements in there that, um, you know, I'm sure will, will be a little bit, um, you know, people will, we'll be hearing for the first time, that's all. So.
And the transportation.
Big surprises for you.
I'm sorry, the transportation surveys next week, is that correct? You're, are you still gonna do it? You're still doing that?
The transportation survey is, uh, gonna go out, um, either, either Friday concurrently with the report or perhaps Monday. The reason we're not releasing it right now is because we've determined that the families will need to know and understand what they're agreeing to, um, what, what there's, what, what transportation would look like, what school would look like in this hybrid plan. And because of that, you know, we wanted the data to be accurate, that they'll be able to make their best decision about transportation with all the information at hand. We'll also be sending out a survey that will go out either Friday or Monday, right in that timeframe, probably Friday, uh, that will ask families if they're planning to send their children to school. Again, this will be the third time, but we'll be asking them for a specific commitment. We'll be asking for that commitment to be turned around to us by the 10th of, of August, because we need to know how to build a plan for, um, providing fully at-home instruction to students who, families who may not feel comfortable sending their students. If the state would allow that, we need to be able to staff it and build it and scale it. And, uh, so we're also sending some internal surveys to determine which staff we may be able to help allocate toward that. And all of this will be collected next week so that by the 10th of August, we'll be in a position to know more. And on the 7th of August, we're supposed to hear from the governor, so, you know, he may have new information for us that sheds some light on things, but, uh, we're gonna ask families for a pretty tight turnaround on that.
Am I, do I understand you correctly that you still don't know a hundred percent for sure if the state requires, um, the district to provide education for families that opt to keep their children home? That's not.
Yes. Our legal counsel tells us right now that they, you know, that we should prepare for that in case, um, that that is at least, at least a reasonable scenario to expect. But we don't have any ruling on that and we don't know. And that is a very predominant question I'm getting from families. It's the biggest question by far. And, you know, we're gonna give them on Friday, our best sense of that, then ask them to, you know, commit if they're interested and then we have to build, try to build it. If the state says, you know, you, you can't provide that, then we're not going to provide it. If they won't, you know, if the state won't count it as instructional time.
Yeah.
Because we're offering something else in school and out of school, then, you know, obviously there's nothing we can do, but I think that that's likely that, you know, they're gonna expect us to provide that. We have to be ready to do that.
So is it, is it the, it's, it's the district's position that we will only provide that if it counts as instructional time according to?
Yes, I think that's the only way we can. If the district won't count it as instructional. If the district won't count it as instructional time, then it's not legitimate instruction. So we would have to ask families to then homeschool, and they would be, you know, having to provide their own education. Uh, but if the state allows it, you know, it's reasonable to expect that we should be prepared to provide it.
Um, can I just ask?
It's going to be difficult, I will tell you, very.
So if the state allows it but does not require it, we will do it. Is that correct?
It's the way we're looking at it right now.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's, um, you know, to take a hard line and say we're not going to, I mean, districts are doing that, but right now, you know, we're gonna try to provide for it if, if we can, because that's the recommendation we're being, being given, and that's the expectation that we have, it's probably gonna be the way the the guidance goes, we think.
Okay.
My signal dropped out for a moment, so I, I may have missed one comment you made. Are you saying you're gonna, as part of the survey on Friday, expect, uh, parents to decide whether they're going to keep their kids home without having the knowledge of whether that will be acceptable education?
Yes, the question will be, if the state allows this, then would you be interested in doing it? Would you be committing to doing that? You know, here's the, they can opt in and they can opt out, we can't give them deadlines or timelines.
Okay.
Asking them for the courtesy of letting us know so we can plan and staff it accordingly?
No, I think when you phrase it the way you just said, where it's, you know, in other words, what I'm concerned about is a, a, a parent having to make the decision to, to keep their child home, and then finds out that if they do that, they have to determine a homeschooling scenario, which may not be practical. And all, you know, all kinds of, or vice versa, right? How someone deciding that they're gonna, you know, risk sending their child in, uh, because they're worried that they have to homeschool and not be able to sort of change their mind. But I think if it's just to get a sense of, you know, if it's allowed, that would be planned, I think that's, that's more reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, we're just gonna try to give them assurance that, you know, if it's allowed, we're, we're gonna try to provide it, we're planning in that direction, and find out who's interested. Try to start getting that staff, you know, getting a plan to staff it. Because, and then once we staff it, we'll start electing in and electing out, it's gonna create real issues for us, I mean, real issues.
No, I, I get that too, I get that too.
Yeah, but, but there's nothing we can really do about it at this.
I just sort of envision that different families will have different perspectives based on whether it's a hybrid model, or, you know, a first model, et cetera.
Previously, when we asked the question, it was sort of in a, more of a vacuum. Now, we're basically gonna give them enough information to make them more informed.
I think that's appropriate, for sure.
And I, I know it's a big turnaround, and, and they can change their minds, but it's really hard on everybody if people change their minds much, so we're just gonna ask and.
There's anything wrong with making sure we're as prepared as we can be?
What's gonna be the rule is people being able to opt in and out, I mean, can they do it week to week?
Can't be, can't be a rule, but, but we're gonna, we're gonna ask for it as a courtesy, we're gonna ask for them to commit.
Yeah, but, Rob, you can't manage a school district that way.
Yeah, I, I hear ya.
Oh.
It's gotta be some kind of a rule that says, if you want to homeschool, it's gotta be for a minimum for X weeks, one marking period, something. You know, you can't have people say, oh, well, you know, two weeks from now, I wanna send my kid back to school, and then somebody gets sick in school, and then they say, oh, no, now I wanna go back to homeschooling. We can't do that, we, we might as well just throw our hands up in the air and say, no mas, you know, I, I give up.
We may have to do that anyway, if somebody gets sick in, in, in one of our buildings, we may have to.
Somebody gets sick in that building.
Or everyone in the classroom, or in a grade.
Deal, you know, but you can't have parents making those decisions.
Well, it, all the models that we have from neighboring states and everything that we understand right now, you know, we're here to serve the families, models we've seen, other states seem to allow that. And, um, you know, you know, I would, when we initially went into this, we were gonna ask people for one semester commitment.
That makes sense.
Ask for that. But the fact is, we can't demand it, it's, it's, you know, someone can bring it, send their child to school and remove them from school at will. And, um, what we have to try to do is to just appeal to people's, well, it's a fairness, and we have to, we have to try to make it as clear what they're getting as we can, so they make an informed decision and don't move too much.
Rob, there, there are.
It creates real issues for not just the district, but for, for other families, other children. Um, so, you know, I think it'll be, but.
Yeah.
It's not the way you run a district, you're right.
Yeah, I think, Vito, I think you're preaching to the choir, I think the admin, the administration more than anyone does, probably would, would like to be able to set rigid rules, but I also feel like, yes, you're probably gonna have, if this is allowed, some, you know, by the state, that you will be offering this homeschool option or fully distance option, there will be some movement. Um, but I think parents are going to understand that it's really disruptive to their child as well, right? So I, I like, as a parent, I'm not going to be panicking, watching the numbers, and pulling my kid or putting, you know, without really thinking very carefully about the kind of, how, how this is gonna disrupt his learning, because suddenly he's gonna be in a whole new cohort with different teachers and a different, you know, scenario. I think if you have a, you know, I can also imagine some scenarios in which you have an immunocompromised child, maybe a child who's receiving treatment, they finish the treatment, they wanna opt back in and go to school, and their doctor gives them that permission, you, I can understand lots of good reasons why children might want to opt in and out at times, and some fluidity is needed, but I really think you're gonna see it, and it's gonna be disruptive, but I, I don't think, for the most part, parents do not want a disruptive experience for their child either, so people are gonna, I think, try to keep a level head when it comes to the well-being and the education and make a choice and not be going back and forth all the time. It's not, I don't think it's gonna happen.
Needed for medical reasons, and, and that's, that's a given, and you'd have to accommodate that. But when you got people going in and out, in and out during the year.
I think you're gonna have it.
Way, the wind is blowing. Uh, what's gonna happen comes the end of the year, are we gonna be able to test these kids and say, we don't think you're ready to go to the next grade, we're gonna hold you back? You know, what happens then? People realize that that could potentially happen? Or tell me I'm wrong and that could never happen anymore, because we can't hold people back?
We don't hold students back in K through eight. That's our district policy.
Is that a board of ed policy or a state policy?
No, it's not a state policy, but as a district, we socially promote through eighth grade.
Well, that might be something we have to look at, if we find ourselves four months from now and half the kids are homeschooling, and we have no idea what's going on in the home, and I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just uncomfortable with that.
Besides that today, I think that has to be looked at.
Yeah.
We don't even know what the policy from the state for opening is gonna be, so.
Yeah, I know that, dude, I'm just talking about possibilities here. And the possibilities is.
What if, every possible scenario, we already got half a dozen scenarios to what if, without that question?
Right, Vito, you're, and the administration hasn't give us an indication that there's five hundred kids that are coming in and out based on the scenarios you're giving right now, so let's see what the survey comes back with, let's see what the state comes back with, and then if we foresee it being an issue, it might have to be re-looked at if the kids come home, go home, go not. Everyone on the administration, I think, is aware of the situation. I know that there's a lot of people that deal with students maybe missing school for other reasons throughout the school years when they were in school at all times, and I think the situations will be handled accordingly, but I don't hear from the administration right now anyone saying that they feel that there's about five hundred or even fifty kids who are saying, oh, we're gonna come one month, not one month, in one week, not one week. We don't even know what's happening yet, so I think it's, I, I understand it's something to be aware of, but we can't, it can't, it's not something that no, anyone can answer right now.
Something to be thinking about.
Yes, agreed.
I like planning.
We should revisit in November.
For something that's
Right.
less likely, but when it hits, I don't wanna be caught off guard. I wanna have.
Right.
It's, it's good that you brought it up, but we should review this again in November.
Yeah.
Maybe even before November, but we should review it again, for sure.
If, if this, if the governor comes out, and I expect it's possible on the seventh, if he gives recommendations and guidance or executive worker intent, he may say, you have, you have to provide this, or you don't. If he says you don't, case closed, right?
It's a state mandate, there's nothing.
If he says you do, then, then we do, and we'll just move forward. All I'm saying is, we're planning, looks, the way the wind is blowing, looks to us like we're gonna have to provide it, so we don't wanna be flat-footed. Uh, we could.
That's smart.
Yeah, that's it, and.
Can I, can I ask?
There's a sympathy or empathy for parents, too, that this is hard for them. And, uh, you know, to take a hard line right now and say, no, I don't think we, I, I think what that would do is drive more people to homeschool, which exacerbates the problem that you're describing, Vito, which is potentially, um, putting some students at, at risk of not having the benefit of obstruction, and what is it? You know, so, we're just, we're just watching it, and I think to, to that point, this is a very fluid situation, and the things we need, you know, everybody to, to understand is that, uh, whatever's in that plan today is all subject to adjustment, and will continue to be subject to adjustment.
Can I just ask a question about the, uh, what we anticipate the guidance, and I apologize, because I never remember the term, but, you know, we have to provide a free, fair, equal education.
Free and appropriate.
Free and appropriate education, so if, if a parent chooses to homeschool only because, like, I've seen emails around my community where they're trying to hire an outside provider, and obviously that's not going to be cheap. What's the interplay of that? Or do we expect the guidance to address that at all, or is that then gonna be something where, even though we're open for business and we're setting up this remote learning, we're still gonna be on the hook to pay for their homeschool?
Um, Noreen, Scott, maybe you wanna address this, I don't see it, but.
I just wanna say, we don't pay for anybody to homeschool. If somebody wants to homeschool, that's their expense.
Oh, except it's, right, the equivalent would be, is, given the times, I, I, because I'm not sending my kid to another school, I'm hiring a school's teacher to teach my kids. It's not truly homeschooling, and, and I could see the argument being made that this was a private, you know, similar to a private school, and I want to be reimbursed for the cost of it, because you don't have something equal.
Private schools aren't reimbursed, Rob.
They are, on the surface, they're doing settlements all the time.
Only special education, right, if we don't have an appropriate placement.
It's the same thing, right, if you don't have an equivalent remote program, then they could argue that they had to do this because you didn't have an equivalent remote program.
It's Noreen.
No, so we have, we have students that are being homeschooled by their parents. That is separate from the virtual instruction that might be provided under the COVID relief. So we, we have students, even when we were providing virtual instruction through the school district, we still had, uh, parents who opted to homeschool their own children, which meant they, under the Part One Hundred regulations, which meant that they provided their own curriculum, and in some cases, they hired their own teachers. They can hire their own teachers if they want to provide that instruction. They can do it themselves, it doesn't matter, they can do whatever they want as long as they provide the school district what, you know, a document showing what they're going to be teaching, you know, the standards and all of that, so that is homeschooling, there's no avenue for them to ask us to pay for homeschooling.
Okay.
Only parents that can ask.
Oh, we've lost you.
Oh, I think she wrote.
Might have lost her, let me, I, I think one of the things we need to be careful with is the vernacular that we're using, because technically, we're not talking about homeschooling. Homeschooling is a very specific thing within education. We're talking about providing parents with the opportunity to distance learn completely, to not be part of our hybrid model. So, in that case, Rob, I don't think that there would be an opportunity for them to come back to us and say that we're not providing a free and appropriate public education. Um, I think there's, there's other circumstances that we have to consider, um, but I don't think in that case, we're actually, um, we're in any danger in that way.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, understand it, because I see it as.
That's a clarification on that.
And then families who are choosing to, you know, hire tutors and create pods, you know, if that's, that is much, just like tutoring, that is basically an efficient form of tutoring in there, uh, one would assume. It's not required, uh, it's not required for students to be successful in our program, at least we don't believe it is. And, uh, you gotta say, someone wants to provide, that's, they may. And we're not going to be making accommodations for people's, um, neighborhood, you know, situations with regard to these pods, we just.
Okay.
So if you get a question along that line, look, I'd love to be as accommodating as possible, but if you're, it is a, a Rob, M, two, Z, and you'll be, uh, that's where we have to drop, there's too many.
That's fine.
Too many variables we're coping with.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do we have an executive meeting?
No.
Okay, would, does anyone else have anything to say? That was my comment. Question, okay, um.
Who will adjourn?
I'll say.
Rob moves, and who seconded that? Judah?
Oh, who will adjourn? I have, I have a question. Do we have any guidance yet on, uh, sports? I know you sent the letter, which I haven't read, the letter to the families, but what's going on with, uh, are kids gonna go to the doctors and get their, all that stuff as if there's going to be sports, or what do you feel?
It's in the letter.
All right, I gotta read the letter then.
Read the letter, that's the best, but it's being, the, the, that is being delayed, this season won't start until, uh, earliest, the Chil- twenty-first of September.
Okay, so nothing's changed since the letter, I'll just go back to the letter.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor of being adjourned?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, see you guys soon.
All right, thanks, guys, everybody.
Good luck.
Thank you.